Did it work, Joe?
Please stand for the flag.
You don't have to. I don't usually.
Okay, you don't have to.
All right, orders of the day. Public hearing, proposed local law recreational vehicles and campers. Do we have a motion to open that?
So moved.
Second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got any comments on local law and recreational vehicles? All right. Open a public hearing. Tentative budget for 2023, 2024. Motion to open that public hearing.
So move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got any questions on the budget?
No.
Now we'll keep both in hearings open. Open a public hearing for proposed local law prior written notice. Motion for that one?
I'll move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan, hello.
Hello, I'm, I'm, aye.
Looks warm there.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay. Unfortunately.
Really? I'll shut you off right now.
Would you love to do that?
Okay, approval of the April 5th special board meeting minutes? Need a motion? We'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of vouchers.
We've got vouchers. General fund, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred, eight dollars, fourteen cents. Water fund, thirty-three thousand, six hundred, ninety-two dollars, fifty cents. Sewer fund, big one, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars, fourteen cents. And you want to say anything about that one, Joel?
Yeah, the only thing on the sewer fund, the reason that's, Key Bank, our first payment on the Five Streets Sewer was due. And that was three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars of that. Total claims for that sewer bill. Was our first payment on the Five Streets project through sewer. That's why that's so high this month.
And our capital vouchers, seventy-two thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, eighty-six cents. They've all been audited, and I move it to be paid.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
If everybody doesn't mind, I'd like to kind of jump somebody ahead here. Because I've noticed it's way at the end. Key Bank zoning change. It's under new business, but it's way down at the bottom. We've got a lot of other stuff to go through first. And I can't, we got gentleman.
Still standing tall. It's one of the best preserved examples of Roman architecture.
From Key Bank. I think it'd be nice if we could square that away, and then if they need to move on, they can. And Jim's going to help us go through this, but I think it's pretty cut and dry. Do you gentlemen want to say anything first?
So, Mike Lee and I are with Key Bank. We are proposing to build a canopy on the side of our building to expand our drive-through services. And it's our understanding that the zoning where we are now is not, does not permit us to do that. However, the zoning that does allow it comes right up to our property line at the fire department. So we're requesting that that zoning be expanded just enough to our property so that we can add that canopy on.
Got a picture if anybody wants to see it. Basically, we just, they're in neighborhood Commercial One right now. And they're right next to the Village Center. We just need to move the Key Bank into the Village Center. I don't know if anybody has any problems with that or any other questions?
So we will be moving the whole property? Changing the whole property's only, right?
Yes.
Of course.
Yes.
All Key Bank's property?
Yes, all Key Bank's property.
I just have one question. Couldn't this be done with a variance? All I know is Kathy Manning is in charge of the town and village law, law, planning and zoning boards. And she's the one that came to me and said, this is the way we have to do it to do a property. And I trust Kathy because she's been doing this for years.
I just, like you said, I just, I mean, they're still within their own property line, right?
Yes.
They're just going, they're just approaching closure to it.
We are.
Within the limits.
Right.
So you want to?
Sure, sure, Mayor. So, the information this evening and kind of go through the process real quick. I was going to ask you a question whether it would be a variance, but technically, a variance wouldn't solve it. Area variance, a use variance wouldn't really get where they need to go. So I do agree with the notion that it's a zone change request. Now with that, it is within the board's discretion to change your zoning. If you have a legislative body, if you wish, it would be in conformance with your comprehensive plan. It's not spot zoning, it's simply shifting the line over from one district to the next. Which is certainly permissible. Now, to get to that point, it's completely the village board decision at the end of the day. There are a few steps you'd need to follow, and I can kind of work you through those steps. One would be, the board would need to say that it's familiar with the application and accepts it as being complete. And if you do that, then what happens is, is number one, a complete copy of the application would need to be given to Lewis County Planning Department. Because the planning department has to go through what they call 239M review under the general municipal law just to see whether there are or are not significant county-wide issues. And unfortunately, that process, that's a 30-day window, bless you, that the county would have to review that. So I really would encourage the board to consider accepting the application as complete, making the referral to the county to give them as quickly as possible that time clock to start running. That's the first thing. Second thing with this, I see that they've submitted as part of their complete application the Part 1 of this seeker form. And if you probably know a seeker, before you do anything, at the end of the day, before we can file a determination, you have to take what's known as a hard look to see whether it might have any adverse environmental impacts. So they've got their short form seeker form here. There are a couple more forms that would be completed. But that would be done by the village board at your next meeting, okay? And so I can walk you through that when you get to that point. The next step beyond that would be to make sure you're familiar with it and perhaps schedule a public hearing for your next meeting. And what would happen then is the timing is kind of key with it. If you've got a public hearing, so long as that 239M review, that 30-day window has passed, if it's passed, then at the end of your public hearing, you can make your determination at that point. But so we've got a few different moving pieces to this puzzle right now. We've got seeker, which, that's something that can be taken care of at your next meeting, it would be wrapped up. The public hearing, you can schedule that for your next meeting. 239M review, if you deem this complete, you can get that referred out quickly to the county and potentially as quickly as next month, be able to make a ruling on it if the county has done that 239M review. But as I look at it, I don't see anything particularly unusual with it. I just know it's fairly straightforward.
Nobody has any questions? Do we have a motion? Seeing their application complete?
I'll make that motion. What do you need?
All in favor?
Aye.
Everything you need there?
Yeah, I was just telling him the county meeting is the day after ours.
I think it's going to be, but we can still go ahead, and if somebody wants to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for that, we can at least try and keep things moving for them.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing next month's meeting. As soon as I get to my calendar.
See, that's going to be the next month's meeting.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, seventeen?
Seventeenth, May four o'clock.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any other questions on that? So what, do you have any questions for us?
No, thank you for taking the time.
We'll try and keep this thing moving forward.
Appreciate that, and thanks for bringing this up.
Like our attorney says, now we have to send it on to the county.
We knew there'd be some more steps there, so. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So like you, Mayor, like I can work with our clerk to make sure she's got the notice of public hearing. You've got that, that I can publish for your next meeting, which I understand is May seventeenth, four o'clock. Will you be sending out the application to the county?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, so they'll have that process. I'll take a look and address the seeker component of it.
Can I ask, just gentleman, one question?
Of course.
I don't know if the county does this or not. But if they were willing to call a special meeting, say on this, are you willing to pay any fees that they might charge?
Sure.
Because we could check that out, if they'd be willing to do a special meeting and then get back to you.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're kind of looking at like three options as a practical matter. One would be if the county would be able to perform the 239M review or special meeting in advance. If that were to happen, then that would open the door at your next meeting on the seventeenth to review everything and potentially be in a position to make a decision. Or what would happen is if the county is unwilling to do that, then you could meet on the seventeenth, and you could adjourn your meeting until some day after the eighteenth, when you hear back from the county. And at that point, be in a position to make a final decision. Or if not, what you're looking at unfortunately is basically a 60-day window. Unless something changed, it'd be a 60-day window, we're going to finally decide.
So for me, you're there already?
Yep.
Kathy, you probably got a lot of ideas.
Is it possible to approve what's conditioned?
Well, and I've run into that before, and the general rule is, is that you certainly can, at the end of the day, approve an application regardless of contingencies or conditions, but not condition the proper 239M review determination. We're supposed to wait till we hear back.
Does it need a short construction too?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, yeah, appreciate it.
Have a good one, guys.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, moving on, unfinished business. Phase two wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
So, as an update, we have started the disinfection building. Start up Caster and RSI, or PSI is the equipment suppliers for that treatment and disinfection equipment. They've been on site the last few days. We're going to do a startup, Paul will let Colin know. I'm actually going to come here in the morning, I'll graph my fate. They're going to start actually turning on the equipment tomorrow. They've been testing everything, filling it a little more, getting everything hooked up the right way. And they'll actually start turning on disinfection equipment tomorrow morning. So that's been going good. We've been dealing with some operational issues, trying to get some valves closed and things like that. But we're still working through.
Okay, the two change orders here, a little explanation on them. Change order number one for Henderson Brothers. Basically, that's a no-charge change order, and that's just New York State's changing prevailing waves that we have to pay now, and that's basically a notification on that. So we're going to have to pay down the road.
And they, that's no cost because they assumed it was going up, so they got, they had covered.
And then, change order number one for North Country Contractors. Basically, we're going to get a decrease, change some items that we don't need. So there'll be a decrease of ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars on that contract. But then we're going to add five thousand because we need a new chemical feed line we find is leaking down there. And so, but in the end, the five thousand, we're still going to end up with a decrease of ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred on the project. That's what's going on. Can anybody get any questions on any of those change order? Wastewater, right?
Yeah.
And groundwater, well.
We do need a motion.
Motion for the change order.
Oh, okay.
Sabre on, so Sabre on, yeah.
Second? Okay, did I give a second there? Number one for Henderson Brothers?
Yep.
Tony, just a second.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Change order number two, North Country Contractors.
I'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll do this one too. And that was what I brought.
Our transformer's here, right?
What's that?
I say, I think our transformer's here.
Is it here?
The poles, I know they did the pole work. I think the transformer's in. There's some issues with the grounding of the poles. We're working through National Grid. Spencer's done it for National Grid standards, but we're working through what that is. So this says change order one for Spencer Electric. You actually did change order one last month.
That was the search protection.
That was the search protection change order we did last month, so this is just a holdover. There is no change order to talk about yet.
And Manfred's just waiting on threats of the indoor equipment to come in from, mostly from Caster. So they're hoping that's going to be coming in soon.
Okay, streetlight LED conversion program. We're in the process of getting that closed out, getting the final bill. There's a few lights we're getting some warnings on, and driving around at night, they're not working. I've been in contact with New York Power Authority, and they got them on their list to come back and get them checked out. And Paul's been working with a local independent contractor for the lights of National Grid. Changed out the poles on it we got to replace. And I think, you said they're going to be here next week sometime to get that going. Hopefully, by May, we'll have this thing wrapped up. And that's about where we are there. All right, let's go back to the public hearing on local law recreational vehicles and campers. Anybody got any comments or anything on that? If not, we need a motion to close that public hearing. So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed local law RVs and camping trailers. How do you want to, a motion to pass that, or? So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You stay with us, Dan gone?
No, he's gone.
It's a bad Wi-Fi connection down there.
I'll make a change to that resolution because I didn't have you identified as a trustee when I prepared it, so my apologies. But that would be corrected.
I don't have anything. I don't have anything new on music in the park, because, do you have anything from Dan?
Um, Dan just told me that he has several sponsors who are going to be donating. I know WB Payne, United Health Care, I believe. I think he mentioned Americu, and there was one or two other ones. So he said that we should be expecting checks in, you know, the next several weeks. He said he was going to follow up with everybody when he got back, so.
Tentative budget 2023, 24. We need, anybody have any comments on that, on the public hearing? Not, we need a motion to close that public hearing.
So move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt the 2023, 24 budget.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's adopted for nineteen, twenty-three. Okay, proposed local law prior written notice. Anybody have any comments on that, questions? If not, we need a motion to close that public hearing.
So move.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt that proposed local law prior written notice. I'll move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Hello?
Hey, you're here. You're here.
Do I just do it on your phone?
Yes, Dan. Everybody can hear you. You're on speakerphone.
Okay, great.
Okay, craft surcharges. February 2023, it was zero for sewer. March 2023, zero for water. General fund amendments. We need a motion to, except those.
Those are separate from your packet, by the way.
Should have been one separate sheet, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've already got the budget for 23, 24, so we'll throw that out.
You there, Dan?
Okay, basically, this haul is subject to increase, it's on the sewers. Any questions on that? Basically, we got outside haulers bringing into our sewer plant, and they take so much a gallon. I suggested that rates have gone up for our residents, the sewer plant, but the rates for our outside haulers should go up also. So that's what this is. You should have a copy of the letter we want to send them. And that would take effect on June 1st with our new year.
How many outside haulers do we have?
We've got about four down there now, three or four?
Four.
Four. And we did put that little stipulation in, about 60 days, because one of our haulers, we have to keep calling, and we're not going to come in and do that.
It's a three cent increase.
It's not a lot, but our chemicals and everything have gone up in price, so we just.
They have had an increase in.
Two or three years.
Three years, I believe, so.
So we need a motion to pass that.
I'll move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Just finished down the correspondence, we got the Crackle April newsletter. Anybody got any questions on that? If they do, we got Vicki right over there. There's no questions on that, I'll move down to the, from the Office of State Control, our 2022 environmental stress assessment. It is up a little bit, where they talked about no designation, susceptible environmental stress. Basically, that's because of all the big projects we're doing and all the money that we've put out. We're still acceptable all the way around. And as you can see, it's got 20, 20, 21, 22. It's gone up a little each year, but it's been because of our projects. I'm sure all the village and town residents have got letters in the mail here lately on assessments. I figure the board should see what's, we have a couple of our properties. The one didn't go up too bad, it only went up eleven hundred dollars, but our pump station down on East State Street, the new pump station jumped thirty-one thousand, nine hundred. I didn't look for the board yet. See, but we're getting assessed that. Have questions on any of the assessments?
If that pump station.
Yeah, it's a pump station.
If that cost that much to build a thing, isn't it worth?
It's worth it, I mean, with the equipment that's in it, a lot. The pumps and the backup generator and everything.
Joel?
Yes, Dan?
I have a question. How much did our total suspect go up in the village in amount of dollars? Do you have that figured?
Well, the only thing they've increased is, we've gone up forty, forty-two thousand.
In the whole village?
No, no, this is just on the village property that we own.
No, in the whole village?
I haven't, I do not have that, Dan.
Oh, okay, okay.
I know some people have been hit pretty hard, anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand, so.
Well, hopefully, the key will be obviously adjusted somewhat.
Well, hopefully, the key will correct that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, village attorney, do you have anything else?
Nothing in the board.
Just wanted everybody to know that the lovely thing we're trying to do over there in Veterans Park, one of the things Paul and I like to see is some nice new picnic tables over there. So I have put in for the George Davis Fund grant this year to fund eight brand-new picnic tables for Veterans Park. Hopefully, we'll get the grant through George Davis, pay for them. Just, that grant been submitted, we should go in June, if we're going to get it, for those tables. And they're decent tables, they're not those cheap plastic things that fall apart. Court Prejurer, do you have anything?
Uh, no.
Tika, please.
You should have gotten your reports. And then also, I have two bar lights that are sitting in the garage over there for a while. I'd like to declare surplus, they came off. I'd like to declare surplus, they came off the old vehicles.
So basically what we need is a motion to, are you, how are you planning on, are you planning on getting like Auctions International or something? Or just advertising them?
I'll make a motion.
For to authorize the chief to get rid of those lights and put them on Auctions International to get rid of them.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Anything else? Paul, maybe we, if we did get, Randy and Phil are working on getting them set up right now. And then Paul and his crew are gonna put them up for us. We have the new digital radar signs, we've got them in, and it's just a matter of putting them together. And, um, we're gonna try them out on East State Street. And then we're hearing a lot of stuff about traffic and speed on Stowe Street, especially with them wanting to build that new building up there. So we're gonna set one up on that street and try and get some numbers and see what's been going on.
And they're portable, can be moved all over.
They're portable, so we can move them from different streets. Some are the first two streets we're planning on checking out. Do you have anything?
I got a few things. Right now is our season for picking up brush. Um, I just want the public to be aware that your brush should be up on the shoulder of your property, not in the road. Along with picking up brush, we're still, we're out sweeping the roads, um, so we have to go around the brush piles. Um, our crews are out picking up every day, so it's. It's working out fine, but I just want the residents to know, if you put your brush up on the road, it helps us out a lot. If it's out in the road, the sweeper's gonna go by and we're not gonna pick it up. The other thing is, you just need to be patient with us. I know there's a lot of potholes out there. The asphalt plates are just opening up. Once we can get some mix, we're gonna fix a lot of our potholes, especially down at the Four Corners, Riddus's Corners, or whatever you call it, by the DMV, that's been a mess. We tried to, uh, make it a little better, I think we did, but I'm just waiting for some blacktop. Um, and the other thing is, we are looking for summer help. Um, usually every year we have three or four people that we hire on, and we usually have quite a few people that put their name in. This year I have none. So if you know anybody that is, I'm gonna say 17 years older and has transportation, um, the village is looking for young kids to work.
Young.
Or old people, young kids. So, that's it. That's all I got, Joe.
Capital future planning, anything?
No report.
Personnel? See, nothing on the contract or anything yet?
Just working on it, that's all.
Funds?
Nothing to report, no.
Pensions. Fire department, you got anything, Dan?
Same, uh, same as I reported on the fifth cabinet meeting, since.
You got anything, Joe?
Nope, I'm good.
Police department?
No.
Planning board and zoning board?
Nothing to report.
Municipal board?
Had a meeting last week, it was, the meeting went on good, all. Set a lot of stuff there.
Town's tomorrow, right?
Yep.
County, anything, Dan?
Uh, same as I reported on the fifth. The only thing, when I wasn't coming in, but I assume I'll update you on the music in the park. Uh, still waiting on some monies. Uh, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, and right now we have 3AM booked for the music in the park this summer. So as far as the county, same as I reported on the fifth.
Okay.
Can I ask that approved by the fair board if he does have a rain date?
Yeah.
If he does have a rain date, um, we'll be able to use the building.
Any event of, any event of, any climate weather, or frightening weather, we have concerts scheduled this year without fail, unless, unless, uh, we have a power outage. That's all I have.
Okay, I got a little recreation, I handed out copies of this. That 23 summer rec proposal, that's from Dan Myers, we contract with every year for the summer rec. And you'll see the grand total is $65,675. It's up 5,832 over last year. Last year was $59,892. The majority of the increase is wages, because New York State has increased the minimum wage by a dollar. The school has upgraded our usage, raised us $2,000 there. So that's pretty much where the $5,832 came up with. Basically, every year we pay 70% of this. I have been in touch with Ryan Fuchet at the county. They're willing to pay the same fee that they paid last year per student. Last year we had 64 outside the town and village students. So we received 19,000, I think it was $200 from the county towards this. But figuring what we might get from the county and what we might get from the town. It's still gonna cost village residents $46,475. I suggested to Bob Mullen that the town increase their percentage from 30% to 40%. He wasn't too happy about hearing that, he said he didn't want to do it last year. But I also reminded him that village taxpayers are also town taxpayers, and we pay town taxes. And at this point, we used to, the village used to be between $26 and $30,000 was our share for, for summer rec. And like I said, a lot of this summer rec's turned into basically daycare. And it's up to the board what you wanna do going down the road, that's why I'm giving these to you, they're here in April. But I'm thinking if the town's not willing to come up to 40%, then maybe we just don't have a rec program this year. We can't continue to continually, because this has gone up in the last, we didn't have one in, I think it was 2019 or 2020, because of COVID, but it's jumped, it was jumping, jumped 10,000, and now it's jumping 5, and then this year it's almost 6. It's just going crazy every year. I'd say it's doable, I think if the towns will let it come up another 10%, instead of paying 30, they pay 40. Just want you guys to have that information to think about, and maybe at our next board meeting, we can decide which way we're gonna go with it. Anybody have any questions? We had put in, or Mike Young, I should say, has put in for an outside grant, and last year we were able to get 6,000 there, to offset some of the expenses.
Did we have an explanation, Joe, why the school was raising us $20,000?
No. I think it's because Dan was using the cafeteria or something, they were eating, kids were eating in there or something. Although Dan's group also did cleaning over there last year, so. So it wasn't like the school had to clean up after, they did their own pretty much cleaning, but. You know, Dan, they charged you to use the auditorium that night when you had the music in the park. They charge us for everything.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest to you, I, I told, I told Becky, because I was kinda desperate, that we would, I thought was the charge, a couple hundred, $100?
Yeah.
Yeah, I told her that we would take care of that, because they had to keep a guy there, and, and I don't know if there was a lot of cleanup, but they had to keep a guy there, so. I'm not as worried about that as I am them raising us 2,000 on the other end. Uh, you know, it's, I guess, I guess as we move forward as a, as a village, I wanna see us continue this program that we have. Uh, it's, it's becoming more and more obvious to me that business is business, and, and I have a lot of mixed emotions about that.
Well, I'll leave a copy of this proposal in your mailbox, so when you get back, you'll have one also.
Thank you.
And that's all I have on that. Do you have anything you wanna talk about, Vicki and Ricko, or?
I was just gonna mention that the Economic Vision Summit is, uh, next Thursday, and that'll be from night to noon, uh, down at the Howard G. Sagittario Center. And then there'll be a lunch following, following the event that's gonna be put on by the culinary class there for overseas. And that's a free event. And, uh, other than that, we do have the two interns still going on. One intern's gonna be finishing up, uh, next Friday before drunk. And we do have another intern currently on, and she's happy to get involved in anything related to, you know, document writing, things along those lines. She's actually gonna, she was accepted into Harvard Law School, so she's actually, we had her there when she gets out of service, so. So she's around if you need any help or assistance there. Other than that, that's, you already mentioned LED lighting stuff, and.
You know when Chris is, Chris was doing a survey on that, because I know I talked to him.
Yes, on LED lighting, we turned all, everything we pulled from all the communities-related LED lighting, we sent out to NICO and WINDLE, um, with all the issues and things that were.
When I talked to him on the phone, it was like, we were gonna, he was gonna make that available for the other communities to see what was going on?
Oh, yeah, if you, if you want that, we can just send it around. I just forwarded it right on to NICO and WINDLE, what he had, but yeah, I can send that around, what other communities had going on. That's no problem. But other than that, that's, uh, pretty much it. Other than, we do have a front supply for a meeting next week, the 25th, I think it is.
All right, bring us down to public comment. Anybody have any public comment?
I do. More a question, the first one, did, did you vote on the, that local law prior written notice?
Yeah, we did, Todd.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, but I do have one comment, and I hate to bring it up, Randy. Uh, the last couple of weeks of loading cars, uh, up by the Ford Garage the other day, the guy was down blocking off the two lanes. I was coming northbound. He had that blocked off, the turn lane blocked off, but he was down a little bit further to where you couldn't see Jackson Street, anybody coming out of there. And everybody, we were all swerving out around, definitely in the wrong lane, to get around him. And then, uh, this is a week ago, uh, down, what's it, Empire, down to Gerald Nor, Gerald's old place, Empire. He was down where you could get, yeah, Henry thought. Yeah, he had two lanes blocked off, and barely could get two cars in front of him, so that we were actually in the northbound lane to be able to go on, because he was down further than what they were. But in both, in the situation with these trucks unloading, they're blocking those two lanes, and people are swerving around, because you got, there's no S's or B's to it.
Man, anyway, was he on, was he on South State Street or down on River Street?
No, he was on South. South State Street. Heading down toward the.
I've seen a lot of them unloading on River Street, I got a bag.
Well, that's what they had been doing, but this guy wasn't, he was.
And I also found the other day on Jackson Street, they're unloading too, so when you, they're not unloading the same spot all the time, the Ford Garage, because they were on, they were actually on Jackson Street.
Yeah, when they, when they get out in, uh, South State Street, though, they're blocking, blocking off so much of the vision, and people gotta swerve around to get around. Especially with the traffic, we've got heavier traffic now than we've ever had.
Any other, any other public comment?
Joe, going back to, uh, the summer rec, what, do we have the number, how many kids were in the summer rec last year? Give or take, roundabout?
It was over 218. I have the exact numbers in my office, because I have it all wrote down by towns.
So, I mean, just, again, just to put it out there from a person, so I use the summer rec program. Um, I really enjoy the service as a taxpayer, but also as someone, if it was a, if it was a keep it or lose it because of funding, is there any way we could pass some of that cost to the parents? Because I mean, even, even at 200 kids, if you charge $10 a kid for the whole program, there's a $2,000 offset for you, just to offset some of that cost, and it's still cheap. Cheaper than paying daycare somewheres else, is what I'm saying, so.
My numbers have been a little higher than yours, but I've thought about that, too. My thought was a six-week program, $60 per child, and if you had a second child, then maybe only 45 for the second one. Because I've been looking at, you go to send your child to Little League, it's 50 bucks a head to sign up to go to Little League. Hazel soccer, or Lascelle soccer, I guess they call it now, that's 30 or 35 dollars, so, I mean.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking from the perspective of, if it's, if we're gonna lose it by not, me as a parent, we're gonna pay a little bit to have it than, than pay nothing and have it just go away, and I have to find daycare all summer, so.
Well, that's why I was throwing it out tonight, so somebody had a chance to, because definitely by June at the absolute latest, really we should be making a decision at the next meeting in May, because they have to hire their, their help for the summer, and it's getting hard to get help these days. Any other public comment? If not, I wanna go back, I do have one other item that I should bring up tonight, because I want Jim to go over it also. As you know, I think it was at our last board meeting, uh, we talked about. Uh, Reach Terrace, up there by Park Place. I gotta find that one. Basically, uh, looking into the no parking signs up there. You can pull up there to load or unload, as long as there's somebody in the vehicle. And granted, they've been coming up there like 30 minutes before school and, and sitting out there and things. So basically, what the village needs to do is we need to, uh, pass a local law to change that no parking on Reach Terrace to no stand, no stopping or standing. Then nobody can be stopping or standing up there, so we need to, and I got a, I made a copy, I did a preliminary law, I just, I stuck it. I'll find that. Meanwhile, there's a second one that we need to change, and this is because, uh, New York State Department of Transportation contacted Paul, and they're going to be milling and resurfacing North State Street from the Four Corners up past the hospital. They wanna re-stripe that area also. I don't know if they've done a traffic study or what, but basically this was under recommendation of the state of New York. We have, just passed the funeral, we have two-hour parking. They would like us to change that to no parking. And so basically, I put a, a law together for Jim though. Pass one down to Jim.
Basically what it is, is when you pull out of Davenport, um, and take a right, the road actually narrows down when you get to the light. In front of, uh, Dr. Linecker's house and the next house, it really narrows down. So there's not enough lane width, lane width, to actually park a car there and have through traffic. So what the DOT would like us to do is pass a resolution, pass a law that there's no parking there. So when they come through and mill it up and repave it, they can stripe it, so there's no parking spots there. And it's basically only like two parking spots. And now that we've changed, changed the direction of traffic in the morning coming out of Davenport, with people, everybody having to pull out to the right, I think it, it helps us that way, too, because you don't have a car parked right there.
I've been driving by there lately, and I'm wondering why that wasn't done in the past. I mean, there is no room there.
But I must say, you know, after the changing, changing that direction coming out of there, and Randy, Randy knows, too, things seem to be running so much smoother.
and Randy, Randy knows, too, things seem to be running so much smoother downtown, wouldn't you say? Where you still get a couple straight, whether it's that like to pull out to the left, but ninety-nine percent of them pull to the right, and it's just a good flow of traffic. And I think that's ultimately what we were looking for. And I believe there's less people with the water stairs parking the way we have it now. You don't get a huge amount of traffic backed up at the lights or anything, so I think what we did was, what we needed to do.
On Reach Terrace, you put those cones out there, did that do anything at all?
It does, but now people just park in the road instead of pulling off on Mr. Zare's property.
So they're still parking?
Yeah. Yeah. Unless they decide to get out of their little cone and then park on the grass, which has happened a couple times.
So I'm just putting that out there, that's, the board feels we can move forward, that Jim can look at what I wrote up, and if he needs to make changes to it. But my thought was, it's all right with everybody, schedule a public hearing for, based on the board meeting on both of them.
Yeah, and like Joe said, it was a recommendation DOT called me, and it was a recommendation for the traffic in water town, so...
We need a motion on both of them?
Yeah.
If we want to do the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, it would have to be for each one.
I'll make a motion on it first, though.
That's a, uh, North State Street?
Yep.
Okay, second? All favor?
Aye.
And we need one for Reach Terrace.
I'll make a motion for Reach Terrace, change the parking signs on Reach Terrace.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I forgot I had that in my pile, I didn't want to bring up. We've been getting a lot of complaints on Reach Terrace, especially, so need to move forward on that one. And I talked to Randy and Phil before, and they were already okay.
So if we do change the signs...
Change the signs should be all set, because the signs are right now, it's pretty...
So you could issue a ticket, then?
Then they can issue tickets, yeah. But it's, the sign's got to say no stopping or standing.
It's going to vary, right now, timeframe-wise.
Yeah, we had talked about it before.
That's what I said to you guys before, change that, and won't be...
But the thing is, we got to, to do it properly, we got to change it in our codes. Okay, anybody got anything for the second session?
I think I do.
Let's have a motion to go into second session.
I'll move.
Second? All favor? For personnel. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.